Right, we'll call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission, Town of Superior. Can we have the roll call, please?
Chairperson Jim Sutill.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Robert Momars.
Here.
Commissioners Tholus Harden here, Bob McCool.
Here.
Jerry Malia.
Here.
Jason Reese. Lisa Ritchie. Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Woody.
Here.
Attorney Hillary Graham. Planner Steve Williams.
Here.
Stephen Williams.
Thanks.
I've been called worse.
Seeing no members of the public here, I think we can do away with public comment on the consent agenda and non-agenda items. So I think the reason we're here is for discussion and recommendation on Planning Commission work items. I guess turn it over to you all, but before I do, I just wanted to thank Commissioner McCool for organizing a tour for several of us on Saturday to stroll around Northwest Superior and kind of get our bearings and see some of the issues that our residents over there are facing, so thank you.
You're most welcome. Thank you guys for coming. It's awesome.
So I think we, feel free to jump in, anybody, but I think we have kind of two main issues we've been wrestling with. The first is small area plan for Northwest Superior, kind of moving that forward this year, and then the other being the transportation plan and some of the issues we've identified in that regard. So unless anybody else has anything to offer, I thought, Bob, maybe you could speak to the, I know you have some thoughts on the first item, the small area plan.
Sure. Not as prepared for tonight as I was hoping to be, I've been laid up a little bit today, but what I was hoping we could try to do is come up with some goals, priorities, just brainstorm them, especially after kind of our walk around Old Town and other parts of Northwest Superior. Ideas, action items, et cetera, for this area, things that we think are important. Do that as a, just as a commission. Try to pull the public together. I think I've got maybe 10 or 15 people that generally are interested and have attended some meetings in town that we've had for some other items that affected Old Town, original town. Maybe see if we get some others and, you know, plan to have a meeting with them, so thinking if we have our thoughts in mind first, just so we've thought it through and then pull the residents together and let's see what they have to say. And I was thinking that could be a moderated meeting by us. We don't, I don't think we need to hire a consultant or anything for that, but just maybe do a roundtable here and get people's thoughts and ideas. And then take those and digest them as a commission, maybe encourage that same group to come to a series of meetings. And I don't know if this is, you know, four, six, eight, 10 meetings, I'm not sure. I was hoping maybe we could talk about that tonight, see what everybody thinks. And ultimately come out with some recommendations to the board, what we think might help shape the Northwest Superior area. Those could be things that are in the land use code, they could be things in the comprehensive plan, they could be, you know, I know there's variances and reasons for, I think, what is it, hardship required, like there's hardship required for variances, do we want to, I don't know where that's even documented and how that's official with the town, but could we, you know, look at how that's being handled and decide whether we want it to be as stricted as it is or more lenient. Commissioner Sutill mentioned, you know, we've got all this, all these funky little things going on around Old Town. As we walked around, there's just, you walk the alleys and you look around and you see these houses that are anywhere from 10 to 18 feet from the front of the road and, you know, some of them have porches, you know, as I mentioned to Steve, we were interested in putting a porch on, but we can't because it's, you know, it's not a hardship, but, you know, the house was built in 1900 and the, you know, code was different back there, back then, so. But giving, you know, whether we want to just create some flexibility for people to do some things to make the area more interesting. Again, seeing what residents are interested in doing as well. And just pull together just a list of action items and ultimately come out with some recommendations for the board. And I think that, and I'm mentioning original town, but, I mean, we're also, you know, dealing with, if you guys haven't seen the Superior TAP report, if you get a chance to look at this, this would be good to look at. It talks about what, there's a section here that talks about what RTD was thinking about over by the Park and Ride for more homes or apartments, I guess they would be, I think there's also a proposed reroute of Marshall, I don't know how real this is or if it would ever come to pass, but it is a document that's in the town record, we should look at that, like to better understand what's going on behind Costco, the senior center that's been discussed back there, and how would that impact us, how does it impact the traffic, you know, those types of things, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts or comments?
Hey, you wanted to start that with like a focus group of residents from original town?
Yeah, after we get our thoughts together, yeah, that's what I was hoping. And maybe just do it, you know, as a community, as a group and a community, not like an official consultant-driven process yet. We might come out of this and say we need that, but, or want that. We might need it in order to understand how to shape our code and plans and other things, but initially I thought, let's just work together as a community and find out what people want.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. When you look around at the other old towns or original towns of Lafayette and Lewisville and, you know, downtown Boulder and old town Boulder, those areas hold a lot of nostalgic value, historic value, and just the resonance of the community. So, you know, as the town center gets built and how modern that's going to look and to the extent of how large it is, to have this quaint, original town maintaining its own identity, I think this is very important.
And the whole area itself just needs to be thought through. I mean, most of us are looking at it going, this many people with this street layout and, you know, one way in and out, kind of out of the area, and not Old Town specifically. We're restricted to, but it's likely that Rogers Farm has the potential to open that up, so we're not, it's trapped back there on the south side of the creek as they are now, there's basically one way out of there and that's it. Something would happen, you either drive across the field, which didn't work well during the flood, or you've got that one road out, but the rest of, you know, the rest of the area, you've got Marshall Road, that's it. For those of you who've been on it, you know, people are already avoiding it, you know, trying to do, cutting through the original town to just make it easier to get out. If we add 500 or 1,000 more people in this side with apartments and senior living, such it could get, just want to think through what that means to the streets do.
Yeah, I think those are all valid points. And I thought the tour was, you know, a bit of an eye-opener for me, only because I have to confess, I've never really taken the time to simply walk around old, you know, original town. I've driven through there and ridden my bike through there from time to time, but never really, I guess, paid that close of attention to the layout. And, I mean, it's a wonderful location and there are a lot of wonderful properties there. You know, it does certainly have the look and feel of a place that has, you know, it's eclectic, let me put it that way.
Yeah, it is, it's a big town. Yep, there are parts that are stepped back in time.
I think it would be helpful if, especially the residents of original town, if they'd like to maybe come together and give us their thoughts on what they'd like to see for that part of the community, and wouldn't have to be limited to those residents. I would imagine there are folks living in Rock Creek who have ideas like as Commissioner Malia does, you know, some of the things that we'd kind of like to see that area shape up as, all with an eye toward, I would say, you know, you want it to be a very livable place, a very walkable place, and, you know, maintain the small-town charm, you know, to the extent you can.
And just be thoughtful about how we do things. I mean, when we were walking around, I mentioned the trailhead back there and how busy that's starting to get, it's an amazing trailhead, but, you know, came up in the Rogers Farm discussion the other night that, you know, one of the residents couldn't pull their car around with their boat around the street because there were just cars packed on both sides of the road parked for that trailhead for which there's no parking lot, right? Because it's such a cool little spot. And can we address that when Rogers Farm gets built and maybe put a parking area in for a trailhead rather than, you know, people coming into the neighborhood and making it challenging for the residents to get around the street on that side of town? Just lots of little things like that as we grow and this area gets impacted, so.
Anybody have thoughts on the series of meetings that Bob has suggested?
I, that's what we ought to do. I mean, I totally agree, get them in here and let's hear what they think. They've been living with it firsthand for a considerable period of time, let's find out what their point of view is. We discuss flexibility on our little tour and maybe review of some prior plans and what have you, but I think getting them to participate, I think they'd like to be heard. And I'd like to see what they have to say, you know, at the same time.
Yeah, I'd be real interested in hearing feedback from the community.
I think we could also actually, along those lines, promote them to send in emails. If they can't make these meetings, the previous meeting we had on the second, we got, what, four or five emails that we read into the record that are included in the comments. So if these folks aren't interested or available to come to these meetings, I mean, they're certainly available to send an email at midnight and, you know, Stephen will forward it all to us and we can get it that way. So, you know, just to encourage their comment, to keep people engaged, give them different avenues.
Yeah, and I'd love to get something out to whoever's interested. I've got a list of maybe 10, 15 or so people, but more the merrier as far as I'm concerned, but, you know, just some of the reports that are important for them to know about, in case they want to go to the website, we can maybe direct them to, some things like the TAP report for RTD, the comprehensive plan, of course, the transportation plan, those types of things, just for, so you see if we can get some people stimulated and interested in things, so.
Anthony, what do you think?
No, I agree. I think that it's a good idea and that it's something that needs to be talked about sooner rather than later. I really do feel strongly that it should be a collaborative process, and I don't like the idea of just kind of separating the communities and saying that, you know, this is Old Town or original town and they should have say or primary, say in what it should look like. And I think I hear you saying that our community should come together as a whole to kind of create some long-term, broad vision about what that area should look like and how it can coexist with the other parts of Superior and Rock Creek and the downtown center.
So, you know, in terms of next steps, what are you all thinking? Do we do, you know, kind of a, I don't know, public outreach effort, soliciting ideas, soliciting feedback? Do we put that on the agenda on our next meeting? Maybe just, you know, try to give notice to the community and, you know, we want some feedback on observations and ideas folks have about original town? What do you think the next move would be?
Well, I mean, I think we should at least, you know, all our, put all our heads together and there are some obvious things I think we've all talked about and we've heard and, you know, giving people something to react to is as important as soliciting for new information, right? It gets different people engaged, you know, they see what we're going to talk about and, you know, they at least have an opportunity to react to it and then it starts to feed on that, you know, new ideas come out. And once we have that, you know, and then again, yeah, I think that's public outreach, I think it's using our, the tools that we have, the website, the newsletter, the email list that I have or you guys have, I mean, wherever we can reach out to the people we know that are interested and engaged. You know, let's do that first. Let us have a meeting to get our, just get stuff down that we want to send out, right? And then try to have a public engagement shortly thereafter. And it'd be nice to have it as a, I don't know, I have in my head and that's, we should probably talk about this, because I, you know, again, putting the tables out front here and I know we have some microphones, I don't know if those are town-owned now or if we were just trying them out, but, you know, we have microphones sitting out on the table and, you know, we were able to put, well, the town board and a few, quite a few others, and I guess if we put a couple more tables out, we could probably put 20 people around a table. And I was thinking if we could moderate it, which I'm happy to do, I think we need two of us to moderate, if we get another person to do that as well, just more to guide it so that it's a, less of, I mean, we're going to have some venting, we're going to have to let some venting go on, but try to keep it a little less venting, hopefully.
Keep it on track.
And a little more constructive discussion, right, and as best we can. I mean, there are still people who just have things they want to get off their chest and we'll have to have some of that, but, and maybe get somebody who's willing to sit and write it down too, right? I don't know if we have to put it up on boards or anything, but if we could be keeping a notebook of things that come up, so we can get those written down to follow up on in our next meeting. But that's out for discussion, I was just.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I like the idea of giving people something to react to. And one of the things, and again, I'm probably the newest, one of the newest people, but I looked at like the McCaslin Small Area Plan that we got a couple weeks ago, and one of the things that I thought was really good in here was identifying the principles or what we're trying, kind of what you talked about, but putting it on a piece of paper to say, here's principle one, here's, you know, they call them principles, objectives, goals, whatever, but identifying what are we trying to do? You know, we talk about, we want to maybe do something around transportation so that people can come in and out and park and something like that, and what about code? And they go through, again, I'm just looking at this as an example, as it got me thinking, but to say, here's the things that we're, that we'd like to address in this small area plan and lay them out, and again, we might not get everything here, but at least we start with, this is what we're trying to achieve at this meeting and get things that address each one.
Yeah.
So I don't know, it just seemed, this seems so well-laid out when I look at it and stuff.
There was a city of Lewisville.
Yeah, it was a city of Lewisville, and again, it looked like, I mean, someone put a lot of time into this, and I'm not, I'm not saying we need to do this to this level, but it seems like starting with objectives or goals of, here's what we're trying to do, because you've articulated them, but it'd be nice if we put out the meeting notice and we say, here's what we're trying, here's, at least here's the thoughts of what we're trying to address in the meeting.
Yeah, to have a meeting to get that together, right? Let us sit down together as a commission and, I don't think we're prepared to do that tonight, but maybe meeting one is, let's know that we've got a couple weeks' notice for us to be thinking about this and then come into the meeting prepared to, you know, create this, just, it might even be sort of a semi-brainstorming session, what are the thoughts and ideas that we think are worth talking about. And ultimately, we would, after a public discussion, we'd try to prioritize those based on our thoughts and feedback and reality of doing them and, you know, those kind of things, right?
So, go ahead.
No, I would agree with you, Commissioner Woody. For me, and I'm stuck in this place where I feel like I need to see a vision for what, you know, this small area plan is supposed to look like. And I, for me, it's really kind of too broad and too general right now for us to get together as a commission and say, let's do this and let's do this, because we don't know what our town, what our community wants that area to look like. I mean, you have made some good points, Commissioner McCool, but I think that there is also a larger group that needs to come together and help with this vision. Do we want additional roads in this plan? Do we want to limit housing? Do we want restaurants or things like that to be part of this small area plan? And for me, there's that disconnect, that let's have a vision, let's set some goals, let's be clear about what we want that to look like, and then begin engagement.
Yeah, okay, well, so I guess the question I have then is, does it make sense, in terms of next steps, to just get something on our agenda for our next regular meeting and carve out some time where we come up with some ideas that we think the community may want to consider relative to that area, and then follow that up with outreach and the kind of the roundtable discussions we're talking about?
Yeah, I think so, and I, I mean, I, only a slight difference of thought is that I feel like we're, I'm looking at us to, to kind of drive this vision and drive the community to create the vision, right? Because we don't know what everybody cares about right now. I know, we know that there are a few areas of things that people care about. We know that there's Rogers Farm coming in and how that's going to impact that neighborhood, what the traffic's going to be. We know, you know, there's a number of us on Cold Creek who are frustrated with the cut-through traffic, right? We know that there are a bunch of multifamily zoned areas that have us deeply concerned. We know that there's a few other potential projects that could come forward in the next six months to 10 years, right? We have no idea when they might come forward. And trying to get us to come together and early and just start to say, what do we, I don't even know if we're going to be able to say, what do we want this area to be, but we might be able to at least put together some things we don't, that we're nervous about or that we don't want to happen, right? So there's two sides of this, there's the things that we might be able to visualize and maybe come up with what we want this area to look like, but the bigger thing is, is we can look at this and say, you know, we know that if this and this and this happens, it's going to have an impact, a negative impact on the way we want to live in this area, right? So that's the other side of it, right? You know, we know we want to be very cautious about bringing, maybe we do, maybe we don't, maybe we come back and say, yeah, put as many people down here as you want and let's build the roads and, you know, turn this into a metropolis, but I don't know what'll come out of it, but, you know, we don't know, I don't see us coming in and being able to come up with a, you know, have a consultant come in here and draw up a vision, small area plan vision for this area, but maybe, maybe we'll get there, but I think there are just so many things that we're concerned about that have to get out on the table to make sure that we're, you know, looking at both the things we think we do want and also things we're pretty sure we don't want, right? So there's both sides of that.
And then reach out, then do the outreach afterwards, after we've completed that process?
Well, I'd like to get that from the community as well. I think we have some stuff we could talk about.
Right.
But I, my feeling is there are things, I mean, just like Commissioner Stewart said, there are, I've got ideas, obviously, but I'm one of a lot of voices out there, and when I come to these, you know, the Rogers Farm meeting, there were five other voices out there, you know, expressing, I mean, and even, I mean, literally even a husband and wife with differing opinions of what I want to see across the street from me, right? So there are lots of, lots of thoughts about, you know, how this area is going to be impacted by the developments. I just want to get as much of that information from the residents as we can and do our best to hit the things we can, right? I think that we're going to come out of this with maybe two or three or four things that we can actually do in a reasonable timeframe. I don't think we're going to come up with a, you know, big old report, small area plan like that for original town in six or eight weeks, right? Maybe it continues in that direction, I don't know, maybe, but there's some short-term, I think people are realizing there's some short-term things that we need to be looking at with regards to developments, the intense interest in buying up property and doing development in this area and how it's going to happen and, you know, so.
I think to Chairman Sutill's point, I think we need to start somewhere. I think we should put some of these things on paper and look to do it at the next meeting. We can try and notify the public in the meantime, get their awareness of what's going on, what our intent is, what we'd like to discuss, and just get the ball rolling. If we start rolling in the wrong direction, they'll tell us.
Oh, yeah, no doubt. I don't know if we could put together a preliminary or draft slash preliminary schedule of what we think we want these meetings to look like. I don't know if you saw my email, it was late in the afternoon.
Yeah, I did.
Fellas and Stephen and Jim, but just because I wasn't sure if I was going to be here, but I had these, you know, I put down six meetings, I don't know if it's four, six, eight, 10, but I just put down six meetings and, you know, we can put that out and say, oh, we're going to start this process of this meeting and this is, we're going to call this a dynamic plan, right? It might change on the fly as we move forward, but.
What would you all think about maybe for the initial outreach? We just ask the open-ended questions? For example, you know, in a roundtable, what do you feel about, how do you feel about multifamily housing? You know, too much, too little, no opinion? How do you feel about the transportation infrastructure in original town and where it currently is, and would you like to see any changes or, you know, just, you know, we have ideas about what, you know, in a perfect world, what that area might look like, but I guess I'm, you know, I don't normally get so hung up on process, but I don't, I don't want to sort of predetermine the outcome of the community outreach, you know? We're doing our best to spot potential issues that might be, might be impacting people now or in the future, we might want to, you know, we want to get their input on it. Maybe after that, we could get, you know, start to sort of get an idea of, here's what we're, here's what we're hearing, you know, and perhaps then move to the second, third, fourth round of outreach efforts. Does that make sense in terms of process?
Yeah, I think it does. I think what you're saying, though, is we need still to develop, to me, these five to 10 subjects to get their input. So, transportation, trail use, you know.
Parking.
Parking, code, code, existing code. I mean, we should have a, in my mind, we should develop these questions that we want to talk about at that meeting and say, here's a topic, give us your input, here's the next one, and maybe there's an other at the end that says, okay, what have we not, what have we not addressed? But at least something to facilitate the discussion, I guess.
That makes sense to me.
I agree with that. We have to start with something, we can't just say, have at it.
Whatever you want.
We've got to have something. I have to have something in plan. And I agree with that.
Maybe it's an education piece, too. Maybe it's, you know, like you said, here's what we're hearing, so that's an education piece, and, you know, oh, by the way, here's the zoning map. And, you know, by the way, here's the zoning map, here's what, here's what this area looks like. Behind Costco is, you know, I don't know what's annexed and what's not. Yep, so it's not annexed and this is what the process would be if something were to happen there. Here's the, you know, the TAP report if we, you know, that was done last October. And that's raised some concern and, you know, McCools are complaining about all the cut through traffic on Cold Creek, right? And, you know, I know the town halls kind of died, but a lot of people are asking about that, too. You know, it's, I don't know if it's died, but it's not, it's not come up in several months. But there are a lot of people raising questions still about that. Where did that land? I mean, you know, so educating them on these 10 topics that we, you said that we've heard about and that we know. And then bring people together to discuss those and then whatever else they have on their minds.
Do you know it'd be really interesting, and I know that we could do this or that you'd be willing to do it, but like your tour was so good at at least informing, you know, what you know again. You don't know, but you, for someone who didn't know, you know, I'm like you. I'd really never been down there and just walking around and talking about the transportation plan, what RCD. I would bet that most people are like me and didn't understand what you described. And it scared me coming out of there, what that potentially rerouting Marshall Road and building a bunch of townhomes or condos.
Or something.
Yeah, they just, I think about the traffic coming out of there. So to me, that's an issue. And just if there's a way to get what you did to us in an hour to, and maybe it's at the beginning of the meeting for you, because you articulated it really well on the tour, to describe, here's some of the things in here. Here's Rogers Farm, here's the trail, you know, just those things to educate people. It'd be great if there's a visual, but we probably can't do it that way, but at least, yeah, I don't know. I mean, you, because it was so good, if we could get everyone to do, take that tour with you. It gives, it gives me a much better back.
Put a GoPro on my head.
Well, you, actually, that would have been fantastic because it was so, you know, but I don't know how to, I don't know how to accomplish that. But maybe at the beginning of the meeting is giving a little background on the old town area. I don't know, something to give, some perspective, because I didn't have a perspective until I went on that meeting.
You raise a really good point, Stephen, that, you know, I was thinking as you guys were talking that one issue to ask folks about is historic preservation. How important is that? Maybe it's not, you know, but to me, that seems like it's something that would be kind of important to folks, you know?
There's some that are, yeah, there's some things that are, I mean, Dan's building's an old schoolhouse, right? Who knows what will ever happen to that if anything, but, you know, there are still some, still some pieces around, but, you know.
But the elders have to, you know, be weighed in and make sure that they want to be historic because you can't, once it is, you can't make changes to it. And that's the biggest problem.
But what we can do, though, because we sort of all nixed the idea of, you know, having historic preservation, historic districts in there because of the restrictions. But the other way you can, you can go is you can, you can have incentives, right? So if you're, you know, if there's a preservation opportunity, then maybe there's some incentive on the town to, you know, do something more like what we did, which is, you know, keep, kept the whole front of the house. We changed a bit of the back, we added on to it, right? But you could still look at it and see what was there in 1900 when it was built. And it's still, you know, the foundation's been beefed up as best we could when we did it. And then other folks have done the same. They do additions and a lot of people like it, you know? They like being able to leave that, that beats sometimes even just education and encouraging people to do it, you know? But rather than requiring them to do it.
So in terms of next steps, then, should we, is this an agenda item that we put on our next regular meeting to discuss? No, fellas?
I would say work session.
Work session, okay.
Yeah, because it would be.
I got to ask the boss.
Well, that would be.
We have to work through it before we can have it as an agenda item and then say, oh, this is what we're going to improve up to the end of the night.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not suggesting we take action or anything, but just rather, to your point, how do we get the ball rolling?
I mean, yeah, you can discuss it at a work session, but not have it as an agenda item at a regular meeting. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, that, that's just kind of what, what should our next step be? You know, it sounds like if we're thinking, maybe we come up with a list of topics, six, eight, 10 topics.
To prepare for.
To prepare, yes.
The public to come in and sit down with, yeah, that would be a work session.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then can we take that and plan to create an agenda for a meeting?
Like a roundtable discussion with the public?
Yeah, with a roundtable discussion with the public. And does that have to be a, does that become an agenda item? Or is it, can it just be another work session with the public?
I mean, the, the agenda items are, I don't know that any of this stuff, until we're actually making a recommendation or anything, is going to raise to the level of, you know, I think that we need to go through the process and discuss, you know, how are we going to notice? Who are we going to notice, you know? But I, to me, I guess the one thing I have in the back of my mind as I'm listening to you guys talk is that, you know, it sounds like we have a rough outline of what we need for meeting one. And it seems as, you know, from hearing everybody, that the public needs to be involved at different stages. So you don't want to hit them with, hey, what do you guys want to see in original town? Like such an open ended question and then, you know, not be able to kind of control the conversation in order to have it be productive. But I do think that, you know, once you have a more formal outline, you can start asking more specific questions. And then it may, you know, you may narrow down into certain things like, you know, the code and whether or not our zoning, you know, what our zoning allows and whether or not they feel like it's appropriate. I mean, I think that just starting a conversation with, maybe the first meeting, you know, with the public being pretty broad brushed, you, you know, are you aware of this is what the kind of zoning is? You know, these areas are commercial, these areas are, you know, I mean, just the maps, like going through the, you know, I didn't necessarily participate, but I was part of the TAP panel that took place. I facilitated it, I guess. And one of the biggest things that came out of that, and I think, were just the maps, like just some basic analysis. You know, this is what the fabric of this area is. And the same thing needs to, I mean, I think what you're looking for is something that's broader and actually considers a little bit more, you know, beyond the marketplace, like an original town in particular. But, you know, we have industrial zoning in original town. We have medium density residential and we have low density residential. And, you know, one of the things that might be helpful is just to kind of prepare some maps so that you guys have a overview of what's where and then what those, you know, allowances are or something like that.
A bit good.
But, but, you know, that's just kind of the beginning. But, I mean, I just think that we can sit down and talk to the public. And I think it's more about notification. I don't know that, and I think it's a discussion. So I don't know that it's going to raise to a level of, you know, anything that we need to have on the agenda as something that you think you're going to have an action item or resolution on, which is the. Yeah, yeah, and so at some point we'll.
Until we get to where we want it to be, something that.
I think the maps, I think the maps is a great idea. I mean, it'll give us some visual context so we can, this is going to happen over here. This is being talked about over here. This is where you are.
So do we have maybe two public meetings? One, that's more around education and talking about the zoning that's in place and anything people have run up against, right? I mean, I can talk about variances and hardships and, right? Because I've experienced that and, you know, we can talk about the issues and just educate people on the things we are hearing. And maybe they'll even educate us on some other things. And then maybe, you know, get, get everybody up to speed on what, what they need to know about this area in order to have maybe another meeting that's a discussion about, okay, what's important? And what's, what's rising to the top here? Because we can't fix everything. And we can get all in the list, but we'll need ultimately prioritize it. So maybe two public meetings.
I mean, I can't vote and figure that.
But two work sessions with the public.
So one of the thoughts that I had is, and I think I kind of touched on this earlier.
Anthony, your mic, please.
I'd like to come back to it. Maybe as a commission, we should decide on a vision for this area and so that we begin to whittle it down some, so that it's not so broad. Is this going to be an urban area? Is it going to be a residential area? Is it going to be a whatever? And I think we, as a commission, we talk about that and kind of put a point on that. And at that point, maybe go to the community and say, this is what the commission is thinking about for this small area plan for original town or Northwest Superior, before really kind of engaging anyone. I, I think that it would be difficult to have people in a room, even 10 people, and have them kind of decide what that area vision should look like. And if we can give the people some kind of direction about that, I think we'd be better served by doing that.
I agree with that. And I, I mean, I think we, as a commission, to just follow up on your point, I think we, we do sound like we have some ideas about what we think that area should look like. Not that we have a final say by any stretch, but to your point, Anthony, it does seem to me that we could then go into that initial outreach meeting and say, just as you said, you know, this is where we're, this is kind of where we see this going. And we want your feedback, we'd like your feedback on A, B, C, D, and F. Does that, Bob, does that square with kind of what you're?
No, I don't know, it makes me a little nervous because I don't, I don't know what people want yet. I don't, you know, and again, you know, we're, I'm nervous about turning this into a big, you know, into a small area plan, right? I mean, that's, you know, I mentioned Northwest Area Plan. This area is pretty well defined, right? I mean, we have, we have a marketplace and we have a residential area. And the residential area could shift to heavy multifamily, potentially. It could shift to scrape and rebuild, right? It could potentially, parts of it could shift to, you know, more multifamily blending into the marketplace. I mean, there's some shifts that it could make, but I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm seeing a, you know, a change in the way the area might change from anything other than what's already defined, right? The marketplace is already defined, residential areas are already defined. We have a couple of areas, like Costco, that that could, that could hold. I mean, some visioning there might, might be nice just to see what people want. But I, I find those types of meetings are not that productive because a developer's going to come in and tell you what he wants to do. Not, we can maybe express some interest in not bringing in, you know, 500 people, you know, if you're going to build in that area, but, you know, because we can't handle the, you know, we don't have the infrastructure to handle it in this area. But, you know, I can't really see shaping how those undeveloped parcels behind the 76th Street Parcels, I think we call them, would shake out, but, but, yeah.
And I think we're kind of saying the same thing. Because what I'm seeing is that, you know, we have this map and we have this map that has all these different zoning areas on there. And it's a very eclectic town, you know? You have, like Stephen said, there's industrial there, there's residential, there's commercial. There's all these different zoning areas. And I think that by leaving those in place, you give up some control. Because if something's zoned industrial, then how big can that get? And what kind of industrial can go in there? And there's a lot of questions that are unanswered. Whereas if we say, okay, this is what we want, which kind of goes back to what I was saying earlier. If we say what we want it to be as opposed to what we don't want it to be, I think it kind of gives us a little more flexibility and control. And it kind of, it accomplishes the same goal to some extent.
Yeah, we're kind of, we're kind of, I mean, you know, we can certainly talk about zoning desires, but they would just be that because, you know, getting a landowner to downzone is, you know, that's, there are all kinds of implications to downzoning, right? So whether, you know, there are ways to do it, but, you know, yeah, no, I'd be, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Toward that, and should we start with the maps as Stephen was mentioning? I think it would be very helpful to me to just be able to look at what, what's allowable in the various places, you know, currently.
Oh, I'd love to understand what could be done in light industrial in this area because I question, you know, I know, I, you know, I mean, Dan's got his junkyard there, but, I mean, it's not a full legal business. I mean, you know, there are requirements to have light industrial zoning in place. And I don't know how, how well you could pull that off where it sits. I don't know what the buffer requirements between the zoning, you know, between the uses and zoning. If you officially wanted to come in there and do light industrial, like you said, Anthony, I mean, what does that mean? What, what could they actually do legally in that spot, right? And multifamily, I think we know. We're also seeing some of the issues with multifamily, right? Somebody's bought a, somebody's bought a half acre. Is that what that is where that house is? Is that a half acre?
I don't think it's a half acre. It's a.
No, I just pulled it off of the.
Maybe a quarter acre, I think it's 20.
So we've always seen issues with that, they can't do much, right? So, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the map that's in that one.
I mean, to me, just, I guess my own simple mind, for example, I don't. I mean, it would be helpful to know if, you know, looking at a map on this lot, you can have multifamily, but does that mean you can have a duplex? Or does that mean you can have a 12-plex?
You want to bring it up?
Sure.
You can just bring it up and we just look at it. This is probably a 10 or 15 minute conversation, right, to just look at the zoning.
We're looking at it right here.
Are you looking at, you just want to bring up zoning or what do you want to look at?
Map, light industrial, there's three of them.
The zoning map?
Yeah.
Oh, the zoning map?
Yeah. But, but how something is zoned and, and Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong, but zoning is only a part of it, right? Then there's, there's, in order to use that zoning, there are lots of requirements, right, around. I mean, just like multifamily, medium density residential in our, in our land use code has requirements in order to build there. And they quickly found out that because of our, they couldn't go do what they wanted because the setbacks and we're just, wouldn't really allow them to do it, so.
So that's our zoning map. And I think the parcel that Bob is referencing is right here.
Yeah.
Oh, it's right in here, actually, kind of where the end is. And we could pull up an aerial to actually kind of focus in on something.
Are there a bunch of trailers in there now?
Uh, there's actually trailers to the west. It's the lot.
And the north.
That's actually developed.
Into the south.
With a house, with a family house. But they want to redevelop it into three duplexes. And so to Commissioner Sawtelle's question, we, we have residential multifamily or medium density kind of residential zoned here. It does allow for anything actually up to like triplexes. It allows for more than duplexes, just on the face of it. But if you go in and look at requirements as far as setbacks and lot coverage and all these other layers to development requirements, it'd be difficult for too much to develop on a regular lot other than a duplex. I mean, you could put a triplex in and then all of a sudden, you're getting a much smaller unit. So kind of market demands and all these other things yield, you know, to, you know, a traditional kind of duplex. And then the issue we had, or the question that came up and the request that was made was that something less than the 10-foot side setback be applied. So residential low density, what you see in yellow for single family houses allows for a five-foot side setback. But when you get anything, two, two units or a duplex or more, you actually have to have a 10-foot side setback, which, when you have a 50-foot wide lot, you go from 40 feet of house width down to 30 feet. So it becomes a greater constraint. And then you, you know, so it's all those type of layers to a development requirement. And I don't know that, you know, I wasn't here when our kind of code was drafted or these elements were put in place. But on the face of it, it seems like you can have more density in medium density residential than likely could result based on market demands and stuff like that. At least that's what we've seen so far. But it doesn't mean like the other, so that, that's kind of working with parcels that are already platted in an original town. The majority of the lots, or if not all the lots, were platted at 50 feet wide and 140 feet deep. Well, you know, you got a 20-foot alley in the back. But there are some areas, this medium density residential is virtually split in half. But there are some areas, um this medium density residential is virtually split in half. Where the stuff on the, the west is actually platted in original town, and then the stuff uh further to the east has never been platted. So if somebody came in and wanted to plot that with different lot sizes, uh that's a different kind of animal, I don't know what, what we'd get. I mean, you could plot a lot larger in order to have, you know, a, a fourplex or a fiveplex or a sixplex. And be within the zoning parameters of what is allowed within medium density residential, so if we were to go to the. Oops, if we were to go to the actual zoning page. And see the code. We could see the definition real quick, I don't have it memorized sadly. Or maybe that's not sadly. But you could see our code online and it's broken up into sections, the land use chapter sixteen. And the development uh regulations, this is general development review, uh standard cemental requirements. Uh zoning map interpretation, so residential districts is here. Uh medium density residential is intended to accommodate single family detached, two family and multifamily dwelling units, so then you kind of kick back to. Multifamily and it, it doesn't really have a upper limit on it, but if you go down to our. Parameters here, it kind of tells you a little bit more about lot standards and lot widths uh that. Influence what can actually be built out there, uh and then at a certain point, this is residential medium density column here. Multifamily dwellings in excess of six units a lot require a special use review, so the more intense something is, generally the, the higher level of scrutiny. It becomes, like, the review becomes, so um that's kind of a quick and dirty overview, but not kind of getting down, digging down too deep.
Can you speak to the, uh, there's two other zonings in town, there's the industrial use light.
Uh huh.
And then there's also the uh B C, the um, is that business commercial, it's, it's, if you go back to the map, it's um.
Yeah.
Is that what it is, business commercial, yeah. So where the Conoco is, and it's not just, if you look at that, it's not just the Conoco there, it's the, it's the town. Property where the parks department is, it's the Askey home behind that, it's the home on the corner of First and. Cold Creek, and it even goes across the street to where the Siamese, where the, I think he's got Siamese rescue house there. But not the lot behind it, which is interesting, they've actually, I think, applied to try to do some stuff, but.
This one?
Yeah, right, that one there, yeah, but um, so you can see there's this whole big area of B C that has. Some opportunity, and then we have industrial light, is that what the L stands for?
Yep, light industrial, and there's another piece of light industrial over here.
Yes, well, in, in, in the one here is fairly obvious, there's, there's. Storage unit there and it's all legal and legit and, you know, Dan, Dan's property has just been that way forever, he's at the junkyard there, there's some mobile homes on there, there's his house on there. And so he, there's a lot, it's just grandfather Dan, I guess, is the best way to think about it, but what can be done, what can be done there? If that were to change hands.
So the, I think the minimum lot size on that one is one of the influences, but there's also. General development standards that has to come into play, but we go into the industrial uses, it just says light industry, uh industry district. And there's, I think the definitions actually has a better description of.
This is all much less about what's being done now, but what could happen, right, and, and when there's a change of property ownership, but.
May not be defined. Huh.
And these are, that's, you know, we, we want to know if things aren't defined too, right?
No, I think it's fine somewhere else, but I thought it was in there.
Understanding these is, is pretty.
They have a similar table down here for all of this stuff, and it tells you what uses are allowed and it tells you what size of lots there are, so this is the B C district. And these tables specify again, X's are uh. Not allowed, P is permitted, uh S is a special use review, and C is a conditional use review. So the B C district has a handful of uh allowed uses, professional business offices, dental and medical clinics. And then some other type of uses, utilities, telecom facility is a special use review. But a lot of X's that aren't allowed, parking recreation areas, childcare center, family care, homes, all permissible. Bread and breakfast is a conditional use review, mini storage isn't allowed, light manufacturing is not allowed, uh and you get into the industrial. These are all, and even here, it's fairly restricted, there's a lot of conditional use reviews, permitted uses are bottling plants, I mean, there's some fairly intensive.
What, so, so let's just play this out, so. Somebody comes along and says, I need a bottling plant, I want to put it. Right there, and I, I bought the property and what, what else comes into play? As to whether you would actually allow a bottling plant to sit in the middle of a residential area, I, just from a planning perspective in our code, what? What could happen, so if somebody comes along, gives governors, you know, two million dollars for their industrial use lot there, and. Guy comes along and says, I want to put a bottling plant in here, it's a permitted use?
It'd be a tough one, uh to be honest, I mean, we have, so the minimum lot standard for light industrial is ten thousand square feet.
Okay.
And they have six lots at seventy, at seven thousand square feet.
Well, a lot's seven thousand square feet.
Right, and they have six.
Forty by one fifty.
So that's forty-two thousand square feet, so they meet this requirement.
So it meets that, yeah.
But then they have a, a height requirement, um maximum floor area ratio, they have parking requirements. And the big thing, I think, is a setback from zone district. Uh is twenty feet, they have a different requirement within the general development standards about a buffer. Which I think would render the property indealable, um but that can't, that can't happen. So I don't know where we, where we'd necessarily fall um on that, I think the buffer says it's like a three hundred foot. So like if somebody was to come in and annex and want to put an industrial site, like near, like the seventy-sixth street properties. We'd have to show that it had three hundred feet from the closest residential area in order for that to be viable. But here, where it's a by right use, there would have to be some balance struck between the development right of having light industrial zoning and. The impact on the surrounding area, it'd be difficult. But uh, so, I mean, but I'm sure there's some use in here that is permissible, that's not nearly as impactful as a bottling plant would be. But that's a difficult one that hopefully uh we don't have to deal with anytime soon, but um who knows?
Well, I think in looking to the future, Commissioner McCool is correct, I mean, if then, somebody offers them some money and buys the property and the ownership changes. That's, could very well become a reality. Yeah, just, it's, it'd be really good for us to understand, you know, whether it's even feasible, right, I mean, if you have to have, I mean, I know there are, there are buffers between uses. I mean, you've got residential on, on both sides, um you do have a right of way on one side, I guess, because you have the fifth street right of way, so I don't know how that comes into play, but. They, they used an annexed piece of land up on, behind, or next to Sagamore to accommodate a buffer for guardian storage, so that, you know, they're pretty liberal in how they. Consider what a buffer is between uses, right? And, but yeah, but I've, I've often wondered what, what could happen there, you know, what's, you know, is it even feasible, or is it. Impossible because of its position in the middle of a residential area, but. Yeah. And, and these, and, and I think these are things worth, you know, talking about over time too, the residence, the, the medium density residential. It, it's just gotten to be an issue because we've got, you know, pieces, we have, you know, we had a quarter acre of, of. Of land sold with, with medium density residential, and it's, the way our land use code is written, it's just not designed to. To handle that very well, I mean, it's certainly doable, and they can put, they can put something on there, and, but. They can't do a nice job because they, they can't do that and meet the buffer or, or meet the setback requirements that they desire, so.
There's all sorts of sections of the code that address different things, like this one even addresses original superior in particular, so new development adjacent to original superior shall be.
Yeah, it's gonna be really hard for them to, to do.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Not impossible, but.
Yeah. But that is a, it is a difficult question. And it's like with anything, I mean, we cause all the time about, well, I live here and I see that this piece is, you know. Open, you know, and are vacant, and is it open space or is it developed, or it's private land, what could happen there? Well, it's not a, it's a very broad question, so.
Yeah, but this is the education I think, you know, people need to, to know what their, what's in their area, you know, so.
So how do we want to leave it, folks, do we resume, set our next work session, come with ideas on topics we want to discuss, or how do we?
I'm game for taking Commissioner Stewart's approach of us, you know, coming back together with, and have a discussion about what we. I mean, I think, you know, one, talking about the issues that we see exist in that area, things we've heard, things we know, things we've seen, things we think. With the goal of being prepared for a public meeting, which I, I. I, I think an educational meeting would be helpful for everybody, whether that moves into a discussion, that meeting, or whether we put the discussion off to the next meeting, I. Just thinking it probably might be a third meeting would be better, but, or a second, a second public meeting, the, the third meeting might be better for that. And then leave meetings four, five, and six for us to prioritize and talk through and, you know, get prepared to make recommendations.
Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yes.
Well, Bob, thanks for taking the lead on this important topic, we appreciate you.
Thank you on your point on it, so for listening.
So should we schedule next meeting would be work session with this topic, and then do we need to? I mean, how do we public notice, how do we, how do we get the public engaged, what's, what's the, for the second and third meetings, I guess?
I mean, so that's, that's the trick, I guess, is that we have these meetings, we tell people what's on the agenda, it can be more specific than uh what we've listed the discussion item. As item four tonight, um but if you are trying to drum up public engagement, something probably more specific or broader. And there's all sorts of ways, I mean, some of your feedback tools are, you know, you start with surveys or, you know, like, you know, once you get into. Actually trying to solicit feedback on certain things, but actually just trying to notice the hearing, I mean, we're not, I mean, I don't know that we do it in anything different than what we do, like for tonight's meeting. Unless, you know, there's some direction to do something different.
I mean, could we get something in the newsletter that's, you know. That gets a little more specific about what we're gonna be doing in the next six meetings, um beyond noticing it.
Well, and that's a trick, I guess, with the, the six, I think we could do this certainly one at a time.
Or one at a time.
Um but the, you know, we'll have to, it'll be a little touch and go, depending on development review schedules and uh when we have applications, and they. But for the next meeting, there's nothing on the agenda um that I'm aware of, and I better be aware of it, so. But something will probably come down fairly soon, uh but I think the next meeting is completely open.
Could we say that the planning commission in their work session will be, you know, working on, you know, Northwest Superior. Discussions about Northwest Superior area over the next, you know, several meetings or next couple months, or, you know, two, three, just something that, that, that says. We're gonna be looking at this without getting specific, right?
General topic. Right.
And, you know, pay attention to the agendas will be, you know, as, as work session opportunities arise, we'll have, you know, public engagement meetings that, you know.
Do you want something in the newsletter, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Okay, I can look into it for sure, yeah.
Put it, um, maybe I'll, if on the website, might be neat to put it on the, the planning commission area or somewhere else on the website.
Seems, seems like we could just kind of spread the word, you know.
And spread the word, yes, in addition to all that, yeah, yeah. Be nice to have a place to point them to, you know, the town website, so, yeah, it looks official and. But yeah, spreading the word is gonna be the thing that gets more people here, anyway.
So next meeting, we.
And if you have some language suggestions on what the topic wants to be, I mean, that's one of the things, I don't, I've kept it fairly general, but if you want, I mean, once we have. I think what you're gonna produce kind of in the next discussion, we can have, you know, those itemized things, and then it becomes more specific, you know, like. It's gonna be transportation on Cold Creek, or, or traffic on Cold Creek, or, you know, zoning with an original town, or something like that, if this becomes more specific, this is what goes out. And people know what questions are being discussed, or what issues are being discussed.
So, so our goal, the way we want to leave it is that our goal with our, is that with our next work session, we come together, we come up with. Some guidance and ideas that we're gonna want feedback on, and then we look to the follow-on work session for community outreach, roundtable discussion.
Or, or an education piece, okay, yeah, that's picking it, I mean, we all offer sharing, you know, the zoning map and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we need to, so that Stephen doesn't get peppered with questions, because you'll get peppered with a lot of questions, well, what does that, what does that designation mean, what can they do, what can they put there? I mean, I don't know, maybe we oughta, in fairness, maybe we should have Hillary or somebody present who can feel that, unless you want to try to do that.
Well, for development, it's, it's probably me more than Hillary telling somebody what they can and can't do, but it's not a. You know, it's, it's a lot easier to respond to a, a development application than to go on with, you know, however many different nuances of an application that could.
Okay.
Yeah, feasibly come through, anything could come through in a lot of areas, you know, like, uh but, you know, realistically. Within medium density residential, it's probably gonna be a single family home, a duplex, or a, you know, smaller unit type of triplex. But we can certainly talk about, you know. Those type of things, when it gets into industrial zoning, those questions become much more kind of open-ended, or commercial zoning, or what's a planned development look like, you know. Depends on what the application is, and I think that's one of the things that our, you know, our commissions and our boards and are, are more used to seeing, is like. The specificity or something like that, so one of the, you know, differences between a use by right and a planned development is. Use by right is something that gets reviewed over the counter typically, you know, like not administratively is a better way to put it, it's not over the counter quick. But huh, but we do look at it and it, you know, like, you know, if it falls under these eight parameters, then it's, you know, it's approved, or it, it meets these conditions and it's approved. Versus a planned development where the board and you guys are used to actually seeing, you know, materials and like, you know. Colors and all these different things like that you'd not, like, I don't comment on in a, in a use by right, I, you know, it's not just that it's administrative, but it's not within the purview of. A use by right development, so those are the things that are different too, so.
Okay, okay. All right, well, are we ready to leave that topic, or is there any, any follow-on?
I'll follow up, once we meet, that would maybe some verbiage and see.
Okay, okay, terrific. I had some thoughts on uh transportation, but I don't want to hog this, so if anybody else has anything else they want to bring up.
No, for it.
Okay, um, I'm not sure I'm as far along with this as I had hoped to be, only because I get a little distracted with my job, but, but. Just a little, one, one to two minute overview. This kind of pet project of mine relates to the McCaslin Corridor, and as, as described in the transportation plan. The McCaslin Corridor was, I don't want to say a centerpiece of the transportation plan, but it was very prominently discussed in there. And specifically, uh number of residents, myself included. Identifying that as a, as an issue that required attention, traffic calming, things of that nature. So at the end of the day, I guess what I would hope to achieve would be, and I think this is the right process, Phyllis and Stephen Hill. So at the end of the day, I guess what I would hope to achieve would be, and I think this is the right process, I'll let Phyllis and Stephen help me if, if it's not. At our next regularly scheduled meeting, I'd like to be able to put on the agenda a proposed resolution that would bring to the Board of Trustees the issue of wanting to move projects forward that are called for in the transportation plan along the McCaslin corridor. And that would be something along the lines of we just going from south to north, the roundabout at Indiana, just getting, getting that on a development timetable. Whatever that would mean, whether it's 12 months, 18 months, 24 months, so that we can start budgeting for it. And then I think, in the meantime, going to the low-hanging fruit, things that we've discussed, I would, I would advocate the radar speed limit signs that Alex described for us. They seem like a relatively low cost. Perhaps something that would, that would help alleviate some of the problems we're seeing. And then I think some, some folks on the commission had some good ideas about, there's gonna be striping along the, on McCaslin. Should we consider essentially widening the bike lanes, narrowing the roadways just a bit to see if that might have an effect on slowing transportation? Anecdotally, I'll, I'll just say that it, it seems, and I guess maybe it's just the time of year, but it seems like there is more and more cycling going on on McCaslin every day. I was driving home tonight and just from the stretch in between, you know, Town Hall and Indiana where I turn off, I mean, I must've seen, I must've seen a dozen cyclists heading, you know, heading up toward 128. And, I mean, it's great, you know, we, we love having that kind of aspect of our community. Boy, I gotta tell you, I mean, you gotta stay sharp, you know, 'cause, I mean, things could be pretty bad pretty quick, so, so I'm hoping we can do something with that and I'll stop talking, but I, I would appreciate your comments, thoughts on it.
Let's just clarify one thing that, I mean, if you, I don't know, if you wanna make a resolution, and I imagine we can make a resolution, that'd probably be a little bit more formal, but if you wanna make a motion, then we can carry forward to the board too with the same type of.
We can do the same thing.
We could do the same thing.
Okay.
We could do that tonight.
A motion would be fine if that's, I mean, if it's the same.
Yeah, it'd just be some minute, I mean, like, we can work on drafting the bullets or however you wanna kind of format it. I can type it up and
Okay.
whatever you're happy with, we can pass on to them to consider at their next meeting.
So then we would, we would come up with that tonight?
We could, if you wanted to, if you wanna.
Okay.
You know, brainstorm, whatever you wanna do.
Okay. I keep meaning to ask and I should know the answer to this, but did the board approve our work plan?
They did, yeah.
Okay. Probably should've asked that for a beginning.
No, it'd have been good for me to clarify.
All right.
Everybody, I mean, you're in favor of encouraging the bike traffic?
Yes.
And slowing down the vehicular traffic, making it more comfortable for bikes, making it safer for even the community accessing the CASL from residential areas. That's sort of the general.
Yes. And, and, you know, full disclosure, I mean, I, I think calming the traffic, at least holding the traffic to the posted speed limit while we're awaiting the more permanent improvements like the roundabouts and things like that, I think that, in my opinion, that, that's a priority that we oughta urge the board to take out.
Yeah, I'd agree with that, Paul Hardinlin. The, the, the safety of the pedestrians and the cyclists along McCaslin, and I, I agree, I've noticed an uptick in pedestrian traffic and cycling traffic along McCaslin in the last week. And it's just 'cause of the weather.
Yeah.
And, you know, as the, our weather gets better, there'll be more. And, you know, the, the last thing we wanna be on the news about is an accident. So, yeah, I think erring on the side of safety for those cyclists and pedestrians is paramount.
Did we talk about low, I don't remember if we talked about lowering the speed limit and going, you know, down to 40 instead of 45 and is that, is that something you'd propose? Or I don't remember where we came out on that one.
Yeah.
I've got general topics of lower, lower speed limits with the price of, ballpark price of a thousand. Speed warning signs, which must be radar kind of things, 7,000 I think are each. Then we talked about increased speed enforcement. Then we talked about traffic light versus a roundabout at Indiana. Alex, as I recall, thought that the roundabout is a more effective way. And noise mitigation brembs was just mentioned. It's not a practical thing at this point in time. But those are the.
We have the striping. Didn't we have the striping? Did you have striping on there?
Yeah, I had striping on it in a different place.
Yeah, there wasn't much cause, 'cause there'd be re-striping anyway.
We were talking about narrowing the lanes a tad and making the stripe bolder to separate the car from the bicyclists and.
Maybe increase the width of the, yeah.
Kinda like.
Yeah, so if we narrow the, the, the road, the lane a little bit, we widen the separation stripe for the bicycle and at the same time make the bicycle path perhaps a little bit wider.
It might even be cool to make a statement in here about our desire to create a more bicycle-friendly McCaslin, because we do host the Morgul, right?
Yeah.
People run this all the time. It's a popular route. We are trying to become known for it, so, I mean, even some signage that, that that's what you're on, you know, and
Yeah, that's a good point.
and just showing that, you know, we as a town are, I mean, in, in addition to being able to protect our, our community from a high-speed road, we're actually doing this for two reasons. One, to protect the community and to encourage the cycling through downtown.
Hopefully commute to work, to work in the town center on your bicycle.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe, you know, try to turn it into a commuting route, bicycle commuting route, yeah.
And Steve, to get back to your question, I think we did, I know we did talk about lowering the speed limit. I would be in favor of lowering the speed limit. I, I think, if my memory's correct, I think Alex didn't think that would be particularly effective, but I'm not positive about that. For some reason, I had it in my mind that he felt like that was probably not gonna change anything, but I guess that assumes that people don't follow the speed limit, so.
Right. I mean, I, I guess I, I think about it and say, it, it's at least a step, especially when you put it with striping and you put it with everything else. If that's our goal and we all think everyone's going way too fast up there already, what's, what's the downside of doing it?
I, I kind of, I'm, I'm with you and I, you know, I, I don't really see a downside. I mean, we're not gonna get crazy. We're not gonna lower it to five miles an hour.
Exactly. And I think 25 is, I think 25 is a little, but especially as you come down and I'll be interested to see the traffic circle and as it comes in, that coming through that 45, there's no way you're gonna, you know, you, you really need to slow down.
Yeah.
And so it just seems like 40 is a, is gonna help you get there quicker maybe. I know even the 25 coming down the hill now helps a little bit, you're trying to go around, so.
Yeah, you've got 40 coming into 35, place your 35, back up to 40, and then as you come back down into the, the circle here, here, I'm sure it's gonna probably drop down to 35 as well, so.
Yeah, and then 10 in the circle, right? I think it's 10 in the circle at Colton, or if you can make.
I mean, depending on the system.
Yeah, even if we're just experimenting, it's, we're still talking about trying to come up with a safe solution, you know, so. We're just putting it out in the air and inviting feedback in a sense, whether it's ratified or not.
That's a good point, you know, and it, I mean, a thousand bucks to lower the speed limit seems like a pretty easy trade-off if, you know, if we wanna be the plaintiff's lawyer again, I mean, if it saves one life, you know, that's, that's pretty easy.
Well, you keep reading about bike versus auto all the time, so-and-so hit, so-and-so kill, et cetera, et cetera. If we may, and I, I agree with what Commissioner McCullough was saying about since we're promoting some bike races and stuff like that, then we should, the community should look more bikish. I hate to use that word, but first thing that came to mind, better, much better.
Bike friendly is much better. Who didn't wanna cut through to use McCaslin, I mean, if going to 40 just pushes 10 people to not use this road because they're not cutting through, they're going a different way.
Yeah, that's a positive.
You know, I would, I would even suggest lowering it to 35 because people are gonna go 45, you know, at 35. Just like they're, they're going 55 at 45.
Especially if there's no enforcement.
Residential area 35 from here to, yeah. I, I don't know if it'll fly with the board, but, yeah.
It's worth a try.
You know, I think coming down the hill, I mean, I don't think you can start 35 at the top, but. Maybe, I don't think you can.
Well, like I said, I don't think anyone's gonna go 40 if it's posted 40.
True, they're gonna do 45 to 50, you know, do 48 is what they're gonna do. We don't take anybody, you know, unless you're 10 miles an hour over, right?
That's right. Well, and I, I think that lends a lot to the point of, of we're doing this to make it a fact. And it's for safety. And it's not just lowering the speed limit, it's lowering the speed limit, it's asking the sheriffs to beef up their patrol. And I, I think I had mentioned this before, when any of us drive through the town of Morrison, you know, if you go three miles an hour over that speed limit, the police officer, I think they have their own force in Morrison, they're not sheriffs, they'll pop out of a tree and give you a ticket.
It's like Lyons too.
Yeah, and, and you know that, I know that, so you never speed going through Morrison, 'cause they'll hang you up all afternoon.
And laugh.
You get that notion of when you drive through Superior, you need to do the speed limit, you need to slow down because there's pedestrians everywhere, 'cause there's cyclists everywhere, and 'cause there's a sheriff hiding behind a bush.
Were we also thinking about a monument sign at the top of McCaslin from 128 and then follow it with a lower speed limit sign hypothetically?
I think monument signs. I, I am so in favor of education that you're coming into a residential area. I, I suggested it going into an original town too, just so people know that you're, you're you know, when you're coming into this town, you're coming into a residential area. I, I think education and signs to educate people on where to go and what to do, that this is a bike route, that it's the commuting, maybe the commuting lane to, to the 36, you know, commuting, commuting trail, right, 'cause it's a connector trail to that, right, and signage getting into that. I mean, we just, you know, make a point of, I mean, not, not tacky, outrageous, but, but communicative.
That's right.
Signage so that people are clear where they're at and, you know.
I agree. Well, you know, and then the transportation plan, I think I might've mentioned this in a prior meeting, but the concept was, you know, this, this roundabout right out here was, was to kind of alert people to the fact that if you're going southbound on McCaslin, you're gonna be traveling through, you know, at least on the edge of residential area. And then the same thing was to be achieved by the roundabout down at Indiana and McCaslin as you're going northbound. Just alerts drivers to the fact that, hey, you know, you're gonna find, you're gonna see people out here. I mean, I see people out there, you know, moms pushing baby joggers on McCaslin for goodness sake. You know, it's scary. I mean, I, I think if, if you all are in favor of taking a shot at lowering it, lowering the speed limit to, you know, Commissioner Stewart's point, if you wanna go to 4, 35. I mean, the most the board can do is say no, but I think that gets a driver's attention.
Well, that, that lends to the argument you guys were debating about was if you lower it to 40, drivers are gonna go 45, 47.
That's right.
So if you lower it to 35, drivers are gonna go 37 to 40, somewhere in there.
Or to your point, if it's highly enforced, then they'll, they'll keep it to 37.
Well, and we're still not bringing traffic to a standstill, you know?
No, it's, it has a right to move.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, are we making a motion or adding this? What were you talking about, Stephen?
So reduce the speed limit to 35, take out 4, I'd say take out 45, I, oh, from 45 to 35, perfect, yes, sorry. Stop radar speed limit signs. Do you wanna put in the monument, recommending a monument?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, entering a residential area.
Yeah.
Noticing the drivers that they're entering a residential area. An original town as well.
It could be a little pricey, but, you know, at least you'll be on the list.
We, we could add that item to Original Town's punch list as well.
We can break that up when we discuss Roundabout Superior. I think those are.
You want that on this too or no?
What's that?
Do you want this one on here?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure what you were saying, okay.
Tell, tell me what you all had in mind. I mean, we could do that on the roundabout, for example, but you're thinking maybe up higher.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking almost at the entry point of.
Where residential starts coming down.
Yeah, but I was thinking even higher up, closer to the top, but, you know, that's.
'Cause there is a sign there, yeah, that says Town of Superior, so you could do it, something more substantial.
Yeah, I was thinking something more oomph.
You're talking about at Indiana?
Make people slow down.
That's right.
At Indiana?
It would be south of Indiana, in between Indiana and 128.
In the gray, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Boulder County, Jefferson County line, cut through, through there. Right behind Snowmass.
Oh, does it?
South Snowmass.
Oh, yeah.
So, we'd have to put it on.
Still us.
Still us, yeah.
Jefferson County?
Yeah, portion of Jefferson County, still us, yeah.
Still Town of Superior.
Still Town of Superior, yeah.
Just the yellow line.
The yellow line, okay.
So we have. That's like up on 128.
We have McCaslin all the way to 128.
Yeah.
Clear out.
Oh, you're right, okay.
Always rolling.
128 towards 93.
We'd have to ask Jefferson County for their permission, yeah.
Put a monument.
It's all over the space, right?
It's in, it's in part of the town. There's, I mean, they're the county that, that part of Superior's in, rather than Boulder County, which the rest of Superior's in, so, but they don't have
Force traffic and collection.
Tourist protection over the road.
I was just thinking, in Lyons, they have a, the speed limit drops dramatically, I think from like 40 to 25, a little yellow light on it. Of course, they put it behind the trees, but still, yeah.
It's for the tourists. It's for the tourists.
Of course.
I think I probably, I mean, there, I, I've seen ways that you, when you make all these changes, that you do some things to alert, sometimes they put flag zone signs and some other things to just, you know, for the first few months to get people to, to see that changes are being made, but.
Well, and if you have one of those radar signs like Alex was talking about, I mean, that would probably be pretty effective, right, is if you place one, you know, facing northbound traffic coming off of 128 before they, before they hit Indiana.
And just put a camouflage on so they think you're. I do like the red and blue lights on, on those ones. They do think.
That gets your attention, doesn't it?
Gets your attention, yeah. Oh, okay. But you've already taken your foot off the gas at that moment.
Is there locations that you're interested in for the speed limit signs or just the public works discretion or?
The only request I would have is to put one, you know, in between Indiana and 128.
Coming down, inside the 35.
Yes, yes, fa- facing northbound traffic so that they know, okay, we're, we're heading into a residential area, basically.
And are we talking about starting 35 at the top of, at 128? So you come around the corner and you immediately start 35? Are you still 45 down to 35 or?
That's a good question, yeah.
I think, I think you want them to get down at 30, start getting down at 35 and lower if there's eventually gonna be a roundabout. You might as well get them used to the idea that you're going down, you know, you gotta, you drive slower.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm thinking wherever that existing sign is now.
Start it there.
Just start it there. You gotta give them an opportunity to come off, you know, that turn. And there is a pretty steep.
Yes, it's hard to, you have to ride your, I mean, you have to get to 35, you're gonna have to really ride your brake.
We do.
Yeah, you do, for sure. You know who's gonna hate it are those truckers.
Steven, that's Highway 128.
Sorry?
The, the truck drivers.
Well, good, they won't come down that road. Yes, we should say.
That's right.
Go ahead.
Take that all, all the way over to.
We could put a weight limit on the road too. That's an option.
And then the other vision that I had was a few kilometers, maybe 10 kilometers after that, alert sign to slow down, then maybe the monument sign. And then that kind of reinforces the fact that you're coming into a, the areas where speeds are slower.
Still before Indiana or right around Indiana?
Right around Indiana, a little bit before Indiana.
Yeah.
As you're going north, a little bit before Indiana, yeah, that, that sounds good.
And where would that monument sign be?
Across the road. I mean, you, I, I think you've got a center, I mean, I don't know what we can pull off or what a right away is, but, I mean, when I think about those monument signs, I think about something in the center, something on the sides, and you're like having to go between them, I mean, it's.
Look, is that, I'm, I'm just having trouble visualizing exactly what it is.
Yeah. Seem going to neighborhood, a big boulder in the middle of the road.
Yeah, see, I wasn't thinking that, yeah, I mean, we probably will have to get there, but I'm thinking, you know, to the, the same side as the residences are on.
To the right.
How about that?
Wow.
Very challenging.
Well done, Stephen.
No kidding.
Very well done. Is that your house?
Yeah, yeah. Well, should be able to, down here, so is there a certain point?
Should be on the hillside back there.
Further back?
Yeah, before you get to the houses, up there.
Yeah.
I didn't see one.
Probably cause I'm going too fast.
No, keep going.
Just after they, they come off the curve.
And I'm speeding through here.
Keep going.
Somewhere there.
Maybe we just need to stall, speed limit signs in general.
It'd ruin all the, the cycle.
Right there.
There it is.
I see it, I gotta turn around.
Oh, there you go.
Forty-five.
It's kinda right after that turn then, huh?
Trying to make it a little more significant of a sign, that's one of my, my problems too, even on Coal Creek Drive, that our street signs are, seem to be offset and not, not that visible, right, you know?
Yeah, that's way, that's.
Yeah, that's, I mean.
Maybe we could request a more significant.
Yeah, a larger one.
Yeah, either larger or something more, yeah, a little easier to see.
But you're saying, start at thirty-five here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know if we could put, you know, entering town of Superior, I mean, I know you're already there, but a residential area.
I think entering the residential area.
Something, a sign that just stands out a little bit more, right, that, that's.
And then, so where would we put the monument sign, right?
Like right in there somewhere?
So we're back even a little.
Back a little more?
Yeah, back, um, south a little bit more.
Back where the homes sort of begin, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Before the homes begin.
Right, is that cur, right on the curve there?
A little more, yeah, like up a little more, the homes are, yeah, there we go, it's right in that area somewhere. So your home's gonna start right in there.
So right where that T intersection sign is, right around there.
Yeah, somewhere near, yeah.
So you're not talking so much about a monument sign as a traffic sign?
Well, I was interested in the monument, but, you know.
Oh, you mean like a.
I know the rest of the commission was ready to go there.
Oh, so just like a town of Superior sign on the side of the road and then something like that?
Yeah, that's what you guys were thinking, right?
So, so, can you describe yours again?
Yeah, let's hear your vision there.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the things that slowed me down is, is, I mean, and it, it's a bigger deal, right, I mean, this, this, this isn't a sign, this is taking that area and you have something in the center, right, so the, the, it's not a yellow line, your, your monument sign entering town of Superior is in the middle of the road, and you're coming, yeah, you're coming on either side of it, the road's narrow right there, and it's really clear that you're coming into a neighborhood, right, and so, um, those are more significant, and they're gonna force people to slow down because there's a big rock in the middle of the road, basically, I mean, it needs to be as wide as the road and.
What about, does it have a?
I wouldn't go up, no, I, I was thinking, like, there, there, you seem like you go into some neighborhoods, right, that are, you go into, um, I don't know if you can see, you'll turn into some of these neighborhoods, they have like a nice monument in the middle that just tells you you're entering such and such a neighborhood or something, and you've, you've come out on one side, you went on one side, you come out on the other side of that.
Almost like a boulevard, a little boulevard type of.
Yeah.
A little landscaped area.
We don't have to get crazy, yeah, like a little, yeah, I mean, I'm not, you go spend, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on it, but.
Zero escape it, just.
Yeah, something, but it's, yeah, a sign in the middle that's, you know, you know, town, town of Superior. You know, some of these even have speed limit twenty-five unless otherwise posted, right, you know, those, those are just, I, I just think educating people and making it clear that we mean what we say, along with enforcement, you know, will, will help.
Is this a major thoroughfare? Would a sign in the middle of the road be allowed on a major thoroughfare?
County road.
You have to check with Alex, I mean, it's, it's a little bit beyond the scope of striping or just signage, uh, cause it would change the width of the, width of the, you know, paved road, so.
Have reservations on that.
But it's, yeah.
Thoroughfare.
But I think you're right, in, as far as its effectiveness, you know, rather than a sign on the side of the road goes.
Well, especially if you've got them on both sides, you're really gonna, it's, to me, it's that narrowing down the lane, you're, you're now gonna slow down because it is on both sides.
I mean, over time, you take that, you start the landscaping, you put in the trees, you, you know, you make it look like you're, you're truly in a town, cause, you know, back, even back here, you may as well be on a country road, go as fast as you want, right?
Yeah.
And as you get closer to the homes, you know, the better our landscaping looks, the tidier it all looks, the, you know, it, it's gonna make people realize that they're in a residential area, and they need to be respectful of it, right?
Well, especially if you tie it in with a future traffic circle there.
Right, yeah, that's exactly.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to all be done at phase one, but, I'm just thinking about the process of getting people to slow down and know that they're in an area that's, you need to be doing thirty-five, and there are bikes, and there are people.
I really do.
Trailhead coming up, you know?
I really do think that roundabout will, will make a huge difference.
And the roundabout could fulfill the monument, you know, I mean, you can, you can do it there, right, as you're going into the circle.
Yeah, I would go there.
Yeah, that would.
Do you want to say anything else along McAsland, or go back to the, uh, verbiage that we're working on?
How many, and do we want a couple more speed limits on it? I mean, I've not, I've only seen that one at the top coming down that hill.
Yeah, I like, I think Alex had proposed six.
Six or seven, yes.
Is that three on each side, or?
That number rings about three.
The flashers, right?
Yeah.
Plus, we have the flashers in addition, right?
Yeah.
I don't know that the topic of additional signage has gotten discussed, I think it was the flashers he was recommending six.
It serves the same purpose.
Yeah, right.
Seems like going down this hill here after you come, cause you start to pick up speed again, right?
I can't stay in my lane.
It dips down, so it seems like coming, just like going.
Maybe you need wider stripes.
This is just wherever Google shoots you.
They're lunch, uh, in the parked car there, or something.
There's another one there, and that's typically where they are, like, a certain distance from an intersection.
Yeah. Issue hunting licenses later.
Yeah, I think you're right, Steve, I think traffic picks up here, yeah, there's a bike cyclist right there. But it, it starts to get a little faster again here.
Horse crossing.
Cause you've got the.
The showers are slow all the way to the turnabout.
I've never seen a horse cross.
That doesn't slow anybody down, huh?
It's too dangerous.
Galloping at full speed, maybe it's gonna cross.
No walking, galloping only.
That's a funny sign.
Is that where Bull Jack is, maybe? Do they have horses there?
Yeah, he's up here to the left as we're, yeah.
Yeah, that might be.
Yeah, he's right back there.
Well, and horses are permitted down, I mean, they're permitted down off that trailhead too, right?
Yeah, that trailhead's getting a lot of horse use, I've noticed on weekends, there are a lot of horse trailers out there.
And I like the, yeah, the wider, wider striped lines, the more protection for bikes, the clarity that those are bike lanes.
That's right.
Anything we can do to make that stand out should help slow people down.
Is that one of the bullet points?
Um, we haven't made that yet, we should get back to the, to the bullet points at some point, but we.
You wanna keep going down the street, or you wanna go back to?
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of the bullet points.
Implementing striping changes.
On five, do we wanna also say, cause I, I thought your idea of, um, about saying we're entering a bike community, so not only a residential area, but a bike, something about the biking.
Or even make a separate point that, you know, with the, um, you know, with our support of, of, oh, actually, just, yeah, encourage.
Kind of share the road type stuff.
Yeah, like a share the road, yeah.
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 Share the road with the, with pedestrians as well as bike, bicyclists.
Yeah, to create a, to create a bike-friendly environment within the town.
Bike, pedestrian.
Bike, pedestrian.
Mother of walking.
Cause we saw them coming off that, um, open space in northwest on our walking tour.
Yeah.
Some guys were coming down the hill, off that hill with, uh, trail bikes.
Oh, yeah.
So.
And I, I, yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we could, could do some Morgul Bismarck signs, just, you know, I mean, I, I, they'd be kinda cool.
Right.
This, this, you're on the Morgul Bismarck trail, right?
Right, right. Yeah, there isn't any signage, yeah.
Well, I, I think in the, in the bike race, that section of McAsland, uh, south of Indiana up to one twenty-eight, I think they call that the wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the bump, the bump and the wall, and that could be labeled too, right, yeah, you know?
You're, you're entering the wall.
You're in, you're on the bump, you're on the wall, and if we have one twenty-eight too for some, it's, it's town of Superior, we could, we could go down there, we could probably work with Boulder to bring all the, to bring that signage all the way around, maybe they'd be up for, you know, cause it goes down, what, ninety-three and then down Marshall Road.
That would, that would be a pretty cool thing, really.
That'd be fun, just come up with the signs for it, yeah.
Little acknowledgement in the, in the daily camera that we're, you know, promoting this kind of an environment. Cause I mean, now then we see a Superior, little notes or something like that.
Well, we have any problems of bikes going faster than thirty-five down that hill? And I don't know that it's a big deal, or, but I just bring it up as, as we're.
It's, it's possible, I mean, I, I, I know, I got, I mean, just even coming over Marshall Road, coming down with the wind behind me, I'm a mountain bike, I got up, my speedometer hit forty, so it's, I'm sure those, I'm sure they can come down that hill at forty-five, fifty mile an hour. We just have to decide whether we're gonna enforce that or not, I don't know if you put a radar on it.
I think cyclists love those radar signs.
Slow down, yeah.
Stephen, would you consider that a trail versus another word?
It's not really a trail, cause it's on the right away.
Route.
Route.
And I don't know if it's still called, yeah, route would be better, and I'm not sure it's called Bismarck, you know, it might be just, I bet I don't.
Morgul.
Just call it the Morgul.
Well, you look into it.
But you can weigh that, I mean.
And is that something?
Did I spell it right, or is it just a K? Doesn't look right to me.
I think that's right, right here.
I think you had it right the first time.
First time?
And also, is that something that we should think about maybe including in our wayfinding signs, or on the back burner?
It's a guy, no, that's a guy, yeah.
It's just a K.
Just a K?
Yeah, that's a good point, I think.
Cause I tell you, when we.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, when we present it to the board, I don't wanna be too out there, you know, I mean, we're basically saying, hey, listen, we need something to happen with this, and I think the more specific and the more structured we can be in presenting something like this to the board, the better chance we have of them really considering it.
Yeah.
Do you wanna?
You're saying, like prioritize this, basically, is that what you're saying?
I think that's what we're asking them to do, right, is to prioritize this as.
So we would list, list ours in our priority?
Maybe even just put, you know, like, at number one, we have twelve to eighteen months, maybe two, three, et cetera, just put, you know, as soon as possible, or something like that, or immediately.
Zero to three months?
Yeah, a lot of that, we could, you know, we can implement it pretty quickly.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of getting in line and then.
Yeah.
Three to six months.
You wanna put down two thousand seventeen, you wanna put down a month range, what do you wanna?
Yeah, maybe we say two thousand seventeen, um, because I, I mean, I would assume there's enough money in the budget.
Fall, fall two thousand seventeen, that'd be what, four months?
Something like that.
Hypothetically.
But will Alex be at the meeting so he can answer, like, how much these cost? Or, how, how will the board know that this is only six thousand, cause that influences me that, is it like six thousand a sign or whatever it is?
Right, good point.
Well, the numbers I had, uh, written down were from Alex, so.
They weren't, or they were?
They were.
Okay.
Yeah.
So could we put those, could we put those, should, should we put those costs, I guess, in here to give them some perspective of what we're asking?
Yeah, just estimated cost.
Yeah, estimated costs, yeah, because we got, like, the roundabout was estimated a million dollars, right?
Yes.
That one was a million?
And the signal was four hundred thousand, but Alex felt that the roundabout is the superior way to, no pun intended, way to handle it.
I just remember.
But we have to be superior, I mean, that's our name, you know?
That's right. What, what did we say for the radar? Do you have the other costs?
Those were seven thousand per sign. And I think he said that it could probably be, be done for less than that. And I think number three was a thousand, wasn't it, reduced the speed limit?
Speed limit signs.
Speed limit signs, yeah, speed limit sign was a thousand.
For each sign?
Yeah.
In just a total?
Total.
Number four, I think, was a sunk cost already, right, cause we're gonna spend, the dollars are gonna be spent anyway.
So included in, in annual maintenance?
Yeah, yeah.
In annual striping or annual?
So, what I recall was that McAsland's gonna get redone after the roundabout, so they're basically working to re, uh, whatever they do, surface the road and re-stripe the road, uh, after the construction is done, so. Maybe we put incorporate into or something.
Would there be any benefit to having, uh, safety after the word transportation in the opening heading?
Yeah, I think so.
Nice, must drive it.
That way you hi- highlight, uh, why we're doing this and then.
Is that where you want it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, um, where have we got, we got costs for, I guess that's probably comparable though, this one. Maybe less actually, cause we didn't get an estimate on this one, but.
Yeah, so we don't have, yeah, no estimate.
No estimate, okay.
Yeah.
You're, you're a big one.
Yeah.
I mean, they should hopefully be able to infer based off of that total.
Yeah.
But are these dates, do you want anything more specific, or two thousand seventeen, just kind of budgetary and implementation?
Yeah, we'll do that, right? Do we wanna put, since we're using years, should we say two thousand eighteen under number one?
You, okay.
When, when did they start budgeting?
No, I think I like the twelve to eighteen months, it gives them a target, we just say two thousand eighteen, that could be December.
Okay.
Yeah, give them some room to maneuver.
You raise a good question.
That gives them a sense of urgency.
When is it, Stephen, when is the budgeting?
Starts, uh, next month, from what I understand.
And I think that's a good, good thing to put, put December eighteen, yeah.
August, yeah, August.
Do we have fiscal, do we have a fiscal year?
Say what?
Is it, do we have a fiscal year end, or is it, is our budget fiscal?
It's the same, it's calendar year, yeah, so, yeah, they started, there's discussions early part of the summer, and it takes them through the end of October or November for them to actually get it.
October, November.
Maybe all, maybe all we need is like, uh.
Well, not, how that's written is a little bit different, I mean, so, if that language is fine, great, if you want it to talk more about installation versus, uh, prioritizing, then we can write it differently too.
You get specific and say, implement, implement roundabout at McAsland, Indiana, twenty eighteen budget, I mean.
Yeah.
Construct roundabout.
That would be, yeah, that would be.
Pretty clear.
That's what we want, that's what we ought to put.
That's right.
I, I would.
If they say no, they say no, but, twenty, just put down twenty eighteen?
So, yeah, construct roundabout at McAsland, Indiana, twenty eighteen. They'll probably bump it to twenty nineteen, but, you know.
We still, we'd still win, so to speak.
Just get, get a priority, you know, get it in the budget, yeah.
Well, if we accomplish that, we, we will have accomplished a lot. What do you think about combining five and six, and kind of including that on, um, our wayfinding signs?
So do you want to have maybe a? So do you want to have maybe a, one bullet point about wayfinding signs with just two bullets underneath, or something like that, or?
I, I think it's a good idea to have the monument sign says entering Superior or Superior Town Limits or however to that, we want that to read. But I think in terms of trying to save some money and combine some things, we could add that number six.
Do we make a 6B? Or?
You wanna make them both?
Confining five and six.
Five AB.
So I have five B, something to the extent of.
Bullet six under five, is that what you're, maybe rewrite the movement.
There you go.
Yeah. Yeah.
You wanna C or do you want for the Morgul Bismarck piece, or do you want two bullets?
I think they're kind of two different things, cause one's about just general bike safety.
Okay.
The other ones, in the Morgul Bismarck, they may or may not.
Very specific, yeah.
We need to involve Boulder and if you're gonna do the loop, do the loop, you know?
Well, we're using a little bit softer language when we say consider, the other ones we actually tell them to install them.
Install.
That one we say consider.
Be a neat thing to do.
Yeah.
It would.
The Chamber of Mike could drive it, too, I know they.
Yeah, that would be a cool thing.
Get some sponsorships or something.
I think that looks really good, folks.
That is good.
I like it.
That would be great.
Your deal, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, should we make, do we make a motion here, do we do it?
Yeah, make a motion and then I'll send it on mail.
Okay, so I will make a motion that the planning commission, what, directly urge the town board to implement the traffic safety recommendations for the McCaslin corridor consistent with the terms of the transportation plan that was adopted.
Should we add corridor after McCaslin in the heading? So that they know we're dealing with the whole length of it, so to speak? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's all right.
No, change traffic to transportation, like.
Yeah, good.
Transportation safety.
Yeah.
As follows.
Do you wanna mention anything about the transportation plan or ads?
Well, you know, I think it's, what we're saying is consistent with the community feedback received in the transportation plan that was unanimously adopted by both the commission and the, and the board as long ago as 2014, I believe.
So maybe something like ads considered in the transportation plan or the 2014 transportation plan?
Yeah.
Shouldn't have listened.
As approved?
As approved, yeah.
There wasn't a second made to that, was it? There was not a second made to that motion, was there?
Not yet, you're still, you're still drafting the motion as we work through it. It's gonna be a long.
As reflected.
As reflected.
As reflected, as approved, as reflected?
Approved.
Approved.
Transplantation.
It's approved, yeah. If it was approved, then let's.
It sounds stronger.
Yeah, that's good.
Do you wanna say it out loud again or do you think they?
Did you get all that, fellas?
Well, you will read it into the record.
You want me to give it another go?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would make a motion that the Town of Superior Planning Commission urge the town board to implement the transportation safety recommendations for the McCaslin corridor as approved in the 2014 transportation plan.
As follows.
As follows. Number one, construct a roundabout at McCaslin in Indiana by no later than 2018. Number two, install radar speed limit signs between Indiana and Highway 128, I would say, and as otherwise deemed appropriate by Public Works. And at locations otherwise deemed appropriate by Public Works.
In 2017.
In 2017, yeah. Number three, reduce the speed limit along the McCaslin corridor from 45 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour in 2017. Number four, implement striping changes to narrow the vehicular travel lanes and create greater separation between auto and bike traffic in 2018.
2017.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2017. And number five, consistent with the wayfinding project and opportunities, install monuments and or signage to alert drivers that they are entering residential area south of Indiana on McCaslin in 2017. Install share the road signs to encourage bike friendly environments in 2017 and consider signage for the Morgul Bismarck route. Okay?
And I'd like to second that motion.
Mr. Amelia, all those in favor? Thanks, folks.
Well, is there anything else we ought to take up for the good of the cause?
It was a good night.
It was a good night.
Happy, it was a good night.
Thank you all for all your hard work and commitment to this, really appreciate it. What's that, bud? Oh, do we have staff announcements, Steven?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, all right, guess we're adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thanks, folks.